Believe it's no more silence. Moving on to item D, the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion and second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Right Administrator reports, Mrs. Blake.
So it's been busy at Morocco. And the teachers have been meeting across the district with grade levels. Working on TSS, diving further into the curriculum. I know that the teachers really appreciate the opportunity to do this. Uh, the conversations go way beyond PD. Um, they're able to come back and collaborate collaborate amongst our staff members when we have staff meetings. Um, and on their prep time, so I really do appreciate giving that opportunity to them. Um, as we wrap up November, we will be hosting grandparents day on the afternoon of the twenty fifth, so the day right before break. From one thirty to three, and we have a lot of great things for the grandchildren and grandparents do together. Um, this school will also be taking their annual walking field trip uptown to hang up their homemade ornaments on that morning. Um, I know the kids are really excited. They have all their ornaments done. Um, and then we are also hosting our scholastic book fair that's open to community members as well. The money raised goes back into the kids. Um, we add things to the library, new books, new furniture. Um, so that is open as well. Um, and we are well into our basketball season and the tournament should be coming up soon.
Um, okay, so last week we conducted our safety drill. Um, it was the first time we actually did during like a passing period. So it was different for all of us. It was a good learning experience, kind of some odds and ends we need to work out with that. Um, we'd like to thank Jake Chambers for coming in. He did a stop the bleed training for us, um, for administration and some of our other staff. So we will be certified with that part. Um, as I'm sure you saw in the notes, we are starting our schoolwide monopoly game. We did that last year as well, and it's very similar to the McDonald's monopoly where the students earn, um, tickets and has the numbers. And each class can earn prizes. Um, it was a huge success last year, and so we're grateful for everyone who donates and helps with that. Kind of big overhaul to take over, but ends up being a lot of fun for both students and staff. Our PDs, the last two weeks, our junior high, we've been looking at the I learn. Um, we have not, we don't have like a data wall, like some of the elementaries, we've been doing them in our Excel sheets. It's easier to see. And then you don't have to cover over like hundred students' names and all that. Um, but that's been something new this year. That we've been looking at focusing on what it's going to look like for checkpoint two. The junior high kiddos got their I learn scores. Those papers went out. I want to say last week, nope, on Monday. We talked about it last week. They went out on Monday. And then today we talked to the English and math for the high school and looked at the PSAT scores. And so the math teachers are going to start going over that. It's probably where our weakest area is, is in the math. Um, and then our FCC LA has been doing the Thanksgiving meal fundraiser for this month. They went out today to get some of the food for that, and then they do the angel tree next month.
Item C Administrator reports, Mr. Zachary. Everybody has a copy in front of them. Um, girls' basketball is currently two and two on the year. We have thirteen girls out for the team. So far, we have been able to play some full JV games despite lower numbers. They play at home on Saturday, November twenty second against Hanover Central. And again, on Monday, November twenty fourth against Attica. We have eleven girls out for wrestling this year, up from four girls from last year. They have competed in invitationals the last two weeks at Park Heritage in Penn. This weekend, they will travel to Clinton Prairie for another invitational. Boys wrestling has a roster of seventeen out this year, which is also more than we've had had in the past couple of seasons. They began their season at the Mike Atwood Memorial Invitational this Saturday at Delphi High School. Boys basketball has twenty boys out this year. They host South Newton in their scrimmage on Friday, November twenty first at five thirty. Their first regular season game is Tuesday, November twenty fifth at Boone Grove. The swim team has fifteen girls and eleven boys out this year. They begin their season on December first against South Newton for the county trophy. We are still looking for volunteers to work the ticket gates and concession stand for our home events. Upcoming dates, the all sports banquet tentative date is December second at six P M. Wrestling Senior Night, Monday, December fifteenth. And coming up on Saturday, December twentieth, the soft softball state champion. Ring ceremony will be between the JV and varsity basketball game.
Can I add to that really fast? Um, there's also been, I'm not sure if flyers have been sent home yet, but there have been posts on Facebook. They are going to be hosting a cheer camp on December eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. You have to register by December third in order for you to be able to get, um, a T-shirt. Um, my little girls go. They have a blast with the big cheerleaders. Coach Postmont does a really good job. Um, it's a fundraiser. I think it's forty five dollars per kiddo. And then if you do multiple kiddos, you do get a little bit of a discount, but it's always something fun. Um, December eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth.
And they also perform at one of the basketball games too, right?
I'm not sure if it's going to be the thirteenth or fourth. They usually come out with that information. Yeah, definitely, but.
Thank you.
Always something fun for the kiddos to do.
Um, item D Superintendent report, Dr. Razor.
It is a couple of weeks since the last report. Uh, met with, uh, Indian Trail, uh, CTE Cooperative regarding a CTE expansion. For us, and that looks very positive. Uh, further updates on that to come. Met with cooperative school services around preschool expansion, and we are set to expand. To a developmental preschool next fall as well as regular preschool with that. Met with, uh, ATI today regarding an athletic trainer for our junior senior high. And we're in the process of getting that rolling. Should have something in front of the board within the next couple of meetings for an athletic trainer. Uh, school calendar survey is out. We're going to be rescinding that, uh, this week again. We've already had two hundred and thirteen responses around people's input for next year's, next year's school calendar. Last night I attended the Morocco versus Lake Village, uh, fifth and sixth grade basketball, uh, game. Very entertaining, lots of good effort on both sides of the court. And then tomorrow I'm meeting with department heads and principals to start on departmental and school budgets for the fiscal year twenty six budget year. That's, uh, just all we got going.
Thank you. Item E, Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report on?
I do. Unless somebody's got it.
I do, but I'll wait for you.
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and Dr. Mike that we met last Wednesday. Um, after the collective bargaining agreement to talk about goals, um, and a strategic plan for the next three years. So it was very exciting to collaborate with the board and have a superintendent working with us to move these goals forward. So we are very excited about things to come, um, in the future for North Newton. And I know you're going to have some updates coming, so I'm not going to steal your thunder later on for those things, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, just to correct myself from last meeting, and when I was thanking everybody from the collective bargaining, I forgot to mention Sam Hickel. Who had been part of our team with Tyson and myself, and I wanted to be on the record to say thank you for her time and effort in that committee. Without her, we definitely, Tyson and I never review all the notes, and she does all that better than we do, so. And we're very grateful for that. Um, very thorough. On the second thing, I, I know you all got this possibly this email today, the ISBA sent it. Uh, Terry reached out to me and. There's a, the Senate Enroll Act two eighty seven, which is for elections. We just did the, um, policy on this. We have to do a modification now. And I wanted to let everybody know. Um, and you can review your email, but this is the print off. The big key takeaway of this, if you select yourself as a D N R, if you leave this seat. The party picks your replacement. We do not vote anymore. If you are an independent. Or don't have a party affiliation, this board still votes, so. This next election, people will have the choice of putting either Democrat, Republican, or Independent or no choice at all. But once you've made that choice, you can flip different parties. There's party rules on that, but. This board does not vote, the party does, on who fills your seats, so.
If you've, if you've declared one of those, because you can choose, you can, you can choose not to declare, correct?
You can choose to not affiliate yourself.
And I talked to my state people. This is a feeler. Right now, the election is still in. The general election is for school boards. I'm presuming and they're presuming in the next election cycle. We'll probably have primaries. It will fully get engulfed into the regular party stuff. They're just doing this as a stepping stone, so.
So you're saying for twenty twenty eight, not twenty twenty six?
FYI, so anybody will look at that email or look at the statute, but, you know. We need to change our part of how we fill seats, paying a party, party affiliation and not, so we'll just have to update that policy. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, item three, everybody's favorite park recognition. Item A, student spotlight. Any who would like to go first? Present their student.
All right, so I have Grayson Ramsey here, and his teacher, Mrs. Talbert, cannot be here. He is in kindergarten at Morocco, and this is what Ms. Talbert had to say about you. I nominated Grayson Ramsey for this month's student spotlight because he shows a positive attitude towards learning. He loves math, but he puts forth effort in everything we are learning and acti- and actively participates every day. He works hard to follow classroom rules and expectations, and if he ever needs a reminder, he responds quickly. He's a great example for his classmates. I am proud of the effort he brings to my classroom.
Okay, um, my nominee is Riley Higgins, and she was nominated by Mr. Holmes. So Riley is a superstar in elective PE weight class. Riley is the hardest worker in the room, day in and day out. She's positive and others gravitate towards her. She's a leader that leads through example, hard work and positive attitude. I love seeing her every day, and she makes the class better because she's in it. For those reasons and many more, I'm nominating Riley for student of the month.
She's also a state champion.
Case, staff spotlight. All right. We do have some staff spotlight. You had one from before that we didn't have last week. So my first staff spotlight from last week was Ms. Combs Long, who goes by Colo. I found out, who also gives an excellent weather report, Mike. I've let you all know, so last Monday, before I canceled school, I found out that Republic was not driving. And when Republic wasn't going to drive, that's a good time to cancel school. So that was our, she was recognized last, last meeting, next. Well, as Mr. Clements, who we recommend, recognized here in the meeting. All right, next. Well, as Ms. Madrigal, who we recognized at the last meeting, wanted to share that as well. And now, Ms. Smith from Lincoln Elementary, who was also recognized at the last meeting. Today, we were able to recognize Mr. Zachary, our Athletic and Activities Director, and I will read his nomination form. It is with great appreciation that we nominate Sam Zachary, our Athletic Director, for the Staff Spotlight Recognition. He exemplifies dedication and an unwavering commitment to both students and staff. When unforeseen circumstances arose the day before the cross-country Midwest Conference. Held at North Newton and the head coach was unexpectedly hospitalized. Hospitalized? Hospitalized, yes. Sam immediately stepped in to ensure the event's success. He coordinated all remaining logistics, contacted schools to ensure. We had the appropriate equipment and staffing and assisted with timing in the awards all the day of the meet. Beyond administrative responsibility, Sam supports the student athletes and coaches. When the cross-country team did not have a driver for a meet, he drove the bus. When we could not find working stopwatches, he ensured we had them in time for the meet. Even when our coaching team's enthusiasm takes creative turns and he may good naturedly think we're a little nuts. He's always willing to step in and support us. For example, he joined in to assist our cross-country athletes during a Friday fun day scavenger hunt. Making a junior high athletes day. This further demonstrates his commitment to both staff and students. Sam's reliability and Spartan first approach makes him an outstanding choice for the staff spotlight. Thank you for all you do. That concludes our staff spotlight tonight. She's going to get hers tomorrow. No, I had a meeting that was going to be there this morning and that now is there in the morning, so.
Okay, this is the point where, um, if you'd like to take the kiddos home, have at it. Um, but thank you for coming and thank you for sharing your children's. Good job, little man. On action items, item A, the Unified Handbook. Working progress.
Yep, we continue to work on, uh, policies as well as job descriptions. Uh, I think I mentioned last time, we've found a lot of discrepancies. In job descriptions among benefits and days, and we're trying to standardize those as we move through, but we are making progress.
Item B, first read, excuse me, first read policy, zero one six six point one.
These are revised recommended verbiage changes. There is no option changes. All options follow current active policies.
Item B, first read policy, zero one six seven point two.
These are also revised policy recommendation verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item C, first read policy, zero one six seven point two.
These are all revised policy verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Uh, first read policy, one two one six.
These are also revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Yeah, I think one of the main words changed where it was grooming and then it went for appearance, because that was the dress. It's now dress and appearance, took out grooming, just mean grooming.
Item E, first read policy, one two two zero.
This is revised policy recommending verbiage changes and option one, option change, page one, letter C. The counsel of the outgoing superintendent was chosen.
Yes, this one would be, um, the next time around, if it comes for interviewing superintendents, this election of the superintendent. We added see the counsel of the outgoing superintendent chosen that way.
And it was not a must, it was could be.
Yeah, you don't want that to be a must if you have outgoing superintendent that, uh.
No, it's just the. Yeah, no, it's an option. I think it's, it's actually at our jurisdiction.
Yeah, your discretion.
Yeah, discretion, yeah.
Item F, first read policy, twenty two ten.
This as well is a revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item G, first read policy, twenty two twenty one.
This is a revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item H, first read policy, twenty three seventy point zero two.
Revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
First read policy, twenty four twenty one.
Revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Yep, there was a whole section added due to legislation change and added Indiana code. I think that was one of them that might have been. There was an update, and then there was another update.
Or it could get updated.
Could get updated, so.
So it's been updated since.
Okay, item J, first read policy, twenty seven hundred.
Revised policy, it's like, it's rescinding the policy.
Item K, first read policy, thirty one forty two.
Revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item L, first read policy, thirty two sixteen.
It's also a revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All re- all options follow current active policy.
You should just get a button that just says that for you.
Item M, M, first read policy, forty two sixteen.
This is a revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item N, first read policy, fifty three ten.
I just have to say upfront, nobody told me this would be part of the job when I agreed. This is a revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Think once we get all these done, we won't have so many to do. That was an end, no. Sorry.
Okay.
My little side comment. First read policy, fifty three fifty.
This is a replacement policy with verbiage changes and the selection of a memorandum of understanding with Valley Oaks.
This one touched on student suicide awareness and prevention. Um, we checked the option for the mental health as far as Valley Oaks. There's also going to be, um, we're going to assemble a crisis response team. Um, discussion of who is that, and I'm believing it would be incorporated into also our school safety plan, stuff like that.
And we, we do work with Valley Oaks. We may have to update that MOU. I don't know if it's been updated.
Okay, item P, first read policy, fifty four ten.
Revised policy recommended verbiage changes. No option changes. All options follow current active policy.
Item Q, first read policy, fifty four sixty two.
There are technical corrections with recommended verbiage changes, and page one of letter E, the student received a grade of C plus or below. And is working toward a seal on the new Indiana diploma chosen. This is the retaking a course. If the student needs to retake a course, so they qualify for the new diploma.
Item R, first read policy, sixty three twenty.
Revised policy recommended verbiage changes, listing position titles and amounts.
And item S, first read policy, eight five zero zero.
Technical correction recommended. Technical corrections and choices based off food service director current protocols.
Yep, then Lucy was advised on this, so she gave us the feedback. And then on, um, the one before it, the sixty three twenty, that has to deal with purchasing. And the changes listed as far as positions go, like. If you go back through a lot of our policies, we had our Director of Business and Finance was listed. We no longer have a Director of Business and Finance. It's now the Treasurer, so that's. Just making sure it's all current, correct, and up to date.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving on to item five, the Consent Agenda. Item A, the Executive Session Board Meeting Minutes of November fifth, two thousand twenty five. Item B, the Regular Board Meeting Minutes of November fifth, twenty twenty five. Item C, Public Hearing Minutes of November sixth, twenty twenty five. Item D, Special Board Meeting Minutes of November twelfth, twenty twenty five. Item E, Executive Session Board Minutes of November twelfth, twenty twenty five. Item F, Field Trip Request. Item G, Professional Development Request. And item H, Financial Claims and Reports. Do I have a motion and a second to approve items A through H in the Consent Agenda?
Okay, perfect.
I will second. Discussion.
On the, also part of our, this, I had Patty and Missy gave us the financial, so thank you. Did you get it to everybody or just me?
No, we got it. It came in board docs. Thank you, ladies.
So there was, this is just to give us our, um. Funds broken down by bank reconciliations to give you a running balance. Um, we're just trying to work on different. Feats that we can provide so everybody has an updated financial situation. Um, with that on the claims. Patty, the six hundred thirty seven thousand five hundred for the A V B T, is that a bond payment? I figured as much. And then the other two are just our property tax or those other bond payments too. So are we caught up with our bonds for the end of twenty twenty five? We have no bond payments for twenty twenty five? July, August. The only field request we have is for. Chicago trip, taking the softball train.
It's an annual trip they take.
And then the other one is for my, um, National Superintendent form.
Bring back the sunshine with you.
Are you presenting or? You're one of the speakers.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, excellent.
And the only fee will be incidentals for that flight. The only fee that I, the only charge will have will be incidentals, like Uber to and from the airport.
That's a two hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything they want to add or ask?
Do you take the school credit card for that?
Thank you, ladies, again.
No.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Items A through H. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Item six. I have a suggestion.
Can I go ahead and make the motion to approve items A through R? Just go ahead and read them off individually, but approve them all as a whole.
I will second that motion.
No, that's good.
Is that okay?
Yes.
I will play it like, you want me to read it off or you want to read it off?
My arm is going to get tired.
So I, I have a motion and a second. So I, I have a motion and a second to accept donations, items A through R.
Yes.
For you to honor. And then to read them individually after, um, so everybody knows where everything's coming from.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Discussion, that's the motion in a second, I have a discussion in a quick. Just to clarify Patty and Missy, because we just talked about this, we wanna clarify for the public and for ourselves and for our administrators and everything. The money that we get for donations, you are putting those individually in basketball or whatever. Cause these people are raising money specific for different sports or different committees or whatever. And then the second part of the question for newbie me, they have access to that. Anytime that the coach or athletic director or whoever's in charge of that program come to you all and say, hey, what's our balance? Can we take some money out to buy whatever? They give you the receipts, you guys make sure that it's purchased. You know, they're not buying a car for themselves, right? Okay, so all the checks and balances, good to go, thank you, sorry.
Okay.
If, if you'd like to read it, please.
We got a donation from Ohio Pile Prints in the amount of forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, a percent of the sale logo merchandise to support North Newton Junior Senior High Athletics. We got a donation from Clintel Inc. in the amount of one thousand thirty-five dollars to support boys' basketball general needs. We have a donation from the Lake Township Trustee in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to support the FFA general needs. We've got a donation from Jasper Newton Foundation in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to support the FCC LA Food Basket and Angel Tree Project. We've got a donation of mini pennants valued at twenty dollars from the Indianapolis Colts for the, um, monopoly game. At the North Newton Junior Senior High, we have another donation of four tickets valued at two hundred and eighty dollars from Chicago White Sox. For the monopoly game coming up. We've got another donation from Demont State Bank in the amount of two hundred dollars to help fund the monopoly game. A donation of treat bags and chips valued at fifty dollars from Missy Byers for the monopoly game. We've got a donation, donation of two cases of gummy cubs valued at fifty dollars from Albany's for the monopoly game. We've got one, a donation of one two-hour rental certificate from Nut Par of Crown Point. Um, for the monopoly game. We've got a donation of three gift baskets and ten gift cards valued at three hundred dollars from Ziggy's Funland in Saint John for the monopoly game. A donation of ice cream valued at seventy-five dollars from Colos Crankens from, for the monopoly game. Uh, donation of donuts valued at fifty dollars from Rise and Roll for the monopoly game. Donation of craft pen sets valued at thirty dollars from Rose Marie's Creations for the monopoly game. Donation of a gift card valued at fifty dollars from JJ's Pizza for the monopoly game. Another donation of candy and chips valued at fifty dollars from, oh gosh, somebody help me with this. The Fudio family, thank you, at the monopoly game. Um, donation of snacks and two Dunkin' Donut gift cards valued at forty dollars from Valerie Cahill for the monopoly game. And then we've also got a donation for the Jasper Newton County Foundation, Jasper Newton Foundation as the amount of five hundred dollars to support the monopoly game.
Thank you Samantha.
No problem.
Good workout. Thank you everyone, that is awesome, all these donations, different programs.
You're gonna post on the website, the winners?
Yeah, it's like a whole week thing. So what do you do with the, uh, five hundred? Do you split that up into different things?
For teachers and students, uh, last time it was like Amazon gift cards for the teachers, um, Dunkin' Donut gift cards. And then like we have instant prize winners too, so that's a lot of the like, um, chips and, um, fruit snacks. There is a whole bunch this time, and so.
Yeah.
Alright, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining. And I'm abstaining because I've been assisting with the basketball program at the high school.
Volunteer.
Volunteering, excuse me. Alright, item seven, the personnel report, do I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel report?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Okay.
And these are our routine personnel items.
Looks like we've got some people that's, were on probation that are being put into full-time.
And a couple of resignations, or resignation here, yeah.
So we discussed, like, Barra Blasco's resigning as a cheer coach, was that just, we discussed that last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, half, and then someone else is taking the other half.
Okay, right, that's right, and we were paid the other person now.
Yeah.
Alright. All those in favor to approve the personnel report, raise your right hand, thank you. Okay, item B, personnel volunteer junior high swim coach Carol Murphy Downey.
I make a motion to approve Carol Murphy Downey as a volunteer junior high swim coach.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Personnel volunteer junior high boys' basketball coach Byron Stevens, do I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Stevens?
Motion to approve.
Wait a minute. All those, I got that one, right?
Yep.
Alright, all those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Item D, personnel volunteer varsity boys' basketball coach Todd Lang. Do I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Lang?
Motion to approve, I'll second. Hang it, Diane.
Hang it, you're making me type half wrote one and not.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining, I'm abstaining because Mr. Lang and I have been working together for the last couple of weeks, basketball. Item E, personnel volunteer varsity boys' basketball coach Tyson Bridgman. Do I have a motion and a second to approve that?
Second it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, all those abstaining, thank you. Personnel volunteer varsity wrestling coach Robert Miller, do I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Miller?
I'll approve.
I will second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Item G, volunteer varsity wrestling coach Tabitha Blair, do I have a motion and a second to approve Ms. Blair?
Don't move. I have a question on that.
Okay, well, this, okay, motion and a second to approve discussion.
On our coaches, I just, I noticed. We had a female wrestling team, do they wrestle other females?
Yes.
Really? When did they start doing that?
Two years, was it, two years ago was the first year.
Yeah, so I'm assuming this, this is a female coach, Tabitha, and she's gonna be helping with the female, we have two different wrestling coaches?
They, don't they still wrestle with the boys too?
They still do wrestle.
They still wrestle with boys also?
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause it shows a full team of eleven girls, and then it's a whole team of a twelve boys.
Motion?
You're right.
Well, I know that the feds have now with Trump in, has changed a lot of rules and set down executive orders about all that stuff, so. And, you know, people's funding can be held on stuff like that nowadays, I just wanna clarify. But do we have two wrestling coaches? Or do we have one varsity wrestling coach for boys and one varsity wrestling coach for girls? Or do we have one varsity wrestling coach for twenty-three kids?
Girls wrestling is its own sport in Indiana now.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favors, approved Tabitha Blair as the varsity, volunteer varsity wrestling coach, raise your right hand. Item H, volunteer varsity wrestling coach Patrick Hand, do I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. Hand?
Motion.
I will second. All those in favor, raise your right hand, you. Okay, item A, action items. I have another suggestion. If we can rope all of A through J. And discuss them all, just like we did with the first reading of the first policies. Instead of voting on them.
Individually.
Individually.
I'll second.
Wait a minute, you, you wanna vote on all?
I wanna vote on item A. Through item J. For the second reading.
Correct, but if you have individual ones.
Yes, so, so.
So we'll still have a discussion.
You could, so you could say, hey, I wanna talk about B, and then Melissa wants to talk about F. We'll talk about all of them, and then we can vote on them as a group. But if you're gonna change things, you're gonna have to vote on them, and then the motions change individual ones.
But if you're gonna change anything tonight, you have to go back to a first read and start the process all over again.
That's what I asked the question, that's the frustrating part for me, cause I asked, this is my first year, and I asked, when do we make these changes? And you all told me, this is the meeting.
During the first reading.
The first reading. You can still, like, we can discuss it.
Make stuff changes, but you have to go back to the whole process again.
For a first read, or practice, practice, Dr. Mike and.
Well, it's both. You, anytime though it changes, that's not the first reading of it, then it has to come back through for a first reading, as I understand.
That's how I understand it.
I specifically asked that question when we started doing these, not this last couple of months, but I'm like, hey, when do we actually change this stuff? And you all said, we do it, you get, you get a whole week or two weeks to review this, and then we make our decision on the next meeting. So I'm sitting here for two weeks, waiting on these specific policies to discuss and to change, or at least make a motion to change. And now you're telling me that we have to go all the way back for those changes, that does not make any sense at all, nor is it transparent, because that's not what was said.
Oh, we can do these one by one, that's fine. Okay, item A, second reading of recommended approval of policy twenty-one-thirty-one. Do I have a motion and a second to approve item A, twenty-one-thirty-one, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so that's just revised policy recommended verbiage changes. There's no discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand, you. Item B, second reading and recommended approval of policy twenty-three-forty. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy twenty-three-forty?
Motion to approve.
I will second. Placement policy recommended verbiage changes and options for field trip. And other corporation sponsored trip requirements. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Item C. The second reading and recommended approval of policy twenty-three-seventy. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy twenty-three-seventy?
Motion to approve, second.
It is revised policy recommended verbiage changes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Hmm, item D. The second reading and recommended approval of policy twenty-four-eleven. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy twenty-four-eleven?
Don't move.
I will second. It is revised policy recommended verbiage changes, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Item E, the second reading and recommended approval of policy thirty-one-twenty. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy thirty-one-twenty?
Motion to approve.
I will second. Revised policy recommended verbiage changes and non-fraternization options. Is there any discussion on policy thirty-one-twenty?
There is a lot.
Okay.
Alright, so thirty-one-twenty is the employment of professional staff, correct? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So in these options, to be clear for everybody, cause it was very confusing for me, and it was confusing for some others that I talked to. When you go through these policies, when you see the red lines on these things, that's not a stat- statute change. That's something that you have a choice as a board of what options you want to pick. So in the options for the choices, this is what the committee or somebody had put together on their selections. In this specific one, it's talking about school board recognizes the, the vital success operations of school corporations positions for hiring. Specifics for administrators, directors, and teachers, for me personally, the teachers I don't want in that list. I think that they need to be off that list, but the administrators and the directors, the three choices that this board has is choice number one, which is what's selected. Choice one, such approval shall be given only to the candidates for the employment of the recommended by the superintendent. Which is exactly what we all had issues with the last time we went through this. Option two. Which is the, I'm sorry, printed it up, I can't. It's not the same I had pulled up. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, those are crossed out ones. Uh, such approval shall be given only, that's what was confusing to me. The other option is such approval shall be given only to those candidates for employment chosen by the board from a group of selected by the superintendent. Meaning the superintendent would give you a list of people that he or the whatever committee interviewed, and the board chooses from those for the administrators and directors. Option three, which is when a recommended candidate has been rejected by the board, the superintendent shall make a substitution recommendation. And the fourth option is all applicants for employment shall be referred to, and it has blank for me to be the board. Some of the research that I did on this is that a lot of districts actually do the options. Uh, most of them do option one, but a lot of other schools like Hamilton County, they have option two. Where the board selects from the group recommended by the superintendent. Missional Schools, they do the recommended candidates is rejected, and the superintendent must make a substitute. Then you have. St. Joe, nine thousand students, they do a hybrid, combines one option with option four. All applicants refer to the superintendent screening committee. I've talked to the superintendent about this, I know how his position is, I respect that. And that it's his, people that he's recommending to us, and as long as our, Mike is our superintendent, I will never. Unless he goes off the deep end, vote against his recommendations. But this is literally prior to me getting here, and prior to me and getting here, the number one issue that this board had. When we had superintendents that were hiring people or recommending to hire people, that you all had no choice on. And you got stuck with whatever candidates, that was a stickler. I made a statement in the public meeting for this board about that specific issue. For me, it's about making sure we have checks and balances. Nothing against our current superintendent, but it puts the authority back in the board. It allows us to be able to make a decision based upon their recommendations. I like option two and option four, for me personally, just gives the board, still the superintendent's making the recommendations. But gives us the ability to review. If you go with option one, that is, you only get what the superintendent gives you as your option, and you can vote it down, but that's it. You don't get to see the candidates, you don't get to see the other options, unless you have an honorable superintendent that sits there in a executive session and discusses that. I would rather be transparent and let everybody in the public see what we're going to talk about and who we're gonna vote for, instead of doing it behind the scenes. So for me, this is a critical issue that since I've been here, we've all fought for. And now we're gonna go with the option that the previous superintendent that was here before. You all were very upset because she was able to hire whoever she wanted, and you all had no authority or no juice to make that decision. And now you wanna go back to that same thing? I'm not saying we're gonna sit there. I'm not saying we're going to sit there and argue with Mike and say we're not going to take his recommendation. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying to protect this board. And the things that we've had to deal with. Those are your options. So my motion would be to amend a select option two.
Well, I think in the process of going through this and the discussion, Dr. Mike, you can talk about what the checks and balances are. On your end with it, with the handbook that is going to come into play that we don't currently have. So that there are checks and balances in place. It's not just a free for all.
I understand his point of view. I want you for the public to understand what we fought for for a year that I was sitting here. It's like the good old boy system. You got the good old boy system when you have your specific picked superintendent, you're fine with everything. But when you have somebody you don't like, then you go off and say, we're not going to do that anymore. We're going to question everything that that person has to say. For me, this is about. Black and white, right or wrong, and doing it no matter who sits in that seat. Yes, I agree a thousand percent. I will support that man tooth and nail for any recommendations he has. But what I'm saying as a board, this was the thing that you all called me daily about this specific issue.
No, I don't think anyone called you daily with all due respect. And yes, there was frustration in the past, but moving forward. Is was where we are trying to look as far as moving forward with the process. And we always had a choice because we could not vote for whoever the recommendation was, which is what happened in the past. Correct me if I'm wrong, anyone? We always have a right to vote. No to someone. It was a recommendation on the personnel report.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's amazing. That's amazing.
Well, and it was, it comes down to the handbook. You can get into that fine nitty gritty detail as far as. How do you expect if we're going to be hiring an administrator? We're going to select a committee, who is going to be on that committee, sitting in on the interview? Who is going to be the one to bring forth the recommendation? It would be from the committee, which our superintendent would be sitting in on. So then we get presented that and then also in the handbook, in that nitty gritty, you can have it say, listen. This is who's going to be recommended for our administrators, our directors or our teachers. You'll have the following protocol laid out as far as. How that process is going to work and with that process, it can be included that. Through the administrative content on board docs, when we as board members see was coming through on the personnel report and I see, oh, okay, this person's being recommended for. The new director. I want to see who else is listed. You could have those nitty gritty details as far as who all was applied for the job. But this is the top recommendation that is going to be on the personnel report.
And I, and I get that and I respect that and I understand where you're coming from, but what I've always been told and somebody. Maybe we can research it or have our attorney look into it. And I know Mike said it a couple of times, policy trumps all because that's your law of the land. So if you're saying handbook supersedes a policy. How are you going to, because in this policy, it says the superintendent is what, whatever the recommendation they give us is what we, that's our own choice. And if you're saying, which I agree with. Because the kicker here is you all. Had multiple choices for your financial person. When we were looking at before I got on this board to be our financial director, I think there was six or seven people that applied. Yep, I think maybe one person here sat on that committee, if there was any at all. I remember you all were upset about it. Nobody knew. Nobody that was local got brought in to you guys to vote on. You literally had Matt to vote on. And that's the only choice and you were told. From what you offered, it was thirty or I'm sorry fifty or sixty thousand till all of a sudden you had to give ninety some thousand and all these other benefits because that was your only person that you could get to do that job. Even though you had six people that you all didn't get to see nor vote on. To make a decision whether those candidates, which were most of them local people, could do the job. Then the second part of it is you had other people that got. Um, applied for jobs that you didn't know about. You all heard about it after fact. I mean, there's times that you all have asked me, hey, I knew this person applied for this job. Why haven't they, why haven't we seen him on the personnel report? So how are we going to protect this board from not seeing that information? From whoever's sitting in the superintendent? How is it in the handbook going to say? From here on out, then whoever applies for any administrative or director's position, because I think the teachers are separate, if those positions are applied for. We will get to see those.
Yes.
And then we get to discuss those in public of anybody that we want to vote on.
Um, as far as that goes, no, that would be in an executive session because it does relate to personnel.
But why would you be able to vote from a list on this? I mean, what, 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 what part of personnel can't you talk about? Because I think people vote on stuff in the county all the time of different employees, like I pick A, B or C. You're going to ask them their social security numbers or birth or?
Yeah, I mean, you can't talk about confidential information. I, I don't know that you. Can't talk about something that's permissible in a public meeting that simply because it's permissible to talk about in an executive session, but. You know, sometimes things are sensitive and, and you don't want to bring things before the public for, for a number of reasons.
Correct.
It's why it's permissible to, to discuss.
But if you had four or five candidates for this policy, the board has the ability to select those four or five candidates in that vote. So if you're voting that in public, then how are they doing that without discussing other than personal stuff about, hey, candidate one was a great choice, candidate two was a great choice. You, you gotta be able to discuss that stuff to a certain level. Because I don't want to be behind the scenes. Good old boy stuff where we have one picked person, even though there's ten people applied and nobody in the public knows where, how we got that person. All of a sudden we've now voting on one person, even though there's been fifteen people applied. Then we get called and I'm like, I don't have a clue because I didn't know about these other five or six people that applied. You know, because the public will know, because they're going to know, they're going to ask. So how do we be as transparent as we possibly can and to ensure that this board? Is able to maintain the control of who works for us in the administrative and um. Director or department heads, because it's very key.
May I say something? So I think, let's, let's talk about a financial position. First of all, those two ladies are never leaving, but secondly, if one did. The reason we would choose John over Diane, let's say there were two candidates. Maybe we run a background check on folks for financial bonding. And we find out that Diane's went bankrupt three times and has met her credit card.
That's stuff you can't talk.
That's, well, that's stuff we can't talk about.
Right.
But. Those aren't things necessarily that you want in a public meeting, you know, because very innocently, Melissa could ask a question. And then we're hemming and hawing going, well. Uh.
And Todd's over here thinking, uh-oh.
Yeah.
I'm supposed to say that.
Excellent example, yeah.
But I think what you, because I, I believe in the transparency of it and one, you know, I think what you can do is first of all. I'm not opposed, and again, it's, it's your all's choice. I'm not opposed to option four being part of it as well because. You can reject whomever I recommend and we could have the same thing with teachers. You know, you've got, somebody applies for something and. You got a background check that doesn't check out or you talk with the school that they had just worked at and. You find out some things that you may not want to bring up. Those are things we could. Discuss in an executive session. But I don't ever believe that carte blanche, the superintendent should come forward and say. This is who I want and I don't have to give you a reason why. I think there, there, there's somewhere, and to your point, Mr. Mark, policy always trumps a handbook. But the handbook is how people carry things out. So if we have a handbook that says. Anyone the superintendent hires, you'll see who applied, who was interviewed, how many times they were interviewed and then. You know, we'll have a discussion about why that's the person you're recommending and then behind closed doors, why you're not recommending others because I don't. I think the board should always have visibility to, to we, to whom we interviewed. At the same time, I always want to be really. Personally, I want to be really cognizant to people who didn't get the job and be respectful of those people that aren't being recommended necessarily. That's always something that I keep in mind of, you know, we don't want to embarrass someone.
No, and I agree with that because we had a couple hires we've had to deal with recently, including our administrative office, that there was multiple candidates and people that lived here in this community locally. You know. Some of those candidates didn't get that position, but we didn't vote on the multiple candidates would put. The individual board members that need to be held accountable by the public and also the people. Why you picked this person over another, but you know, the, the scapegoat that people use is that, well, that's what the superintendent recommended, you know, and they use that as a reason. For good or bad. For me, it's about. Being able to. Justify why I vote for one person over another. Through the vetting process and then be transparent about it and having the choices in front of you because yes, and you're just, your example of. You don't feel coming in and saying superintendent's the only choice you got. They went through, I wasn't on here yet, but they had a superintendent that came in and said exactly that. And then I ended up hiring that person with a tight vote and then actually voted against it. She already hired that person and kept him on the payroll. And it was just chaos. So for me. Again, has nothing to do with you, but putting this together to protect the board. Is what I'm trying to assess and combining one and four is not a bad idea and the concept of what the other, was it St. Joe does that?
Can there be more than one choice?
Yes. As far as I've been told from Neo people.
When you think combining one and four basically means it, well, again, it's not me. I'm going to have a pretty good idea. I'm not going to bring somebody in front of you that I think five of you are going to vote against or four of you.
But we can't, but we can't discuss it in an executive session. I'd want him or I don't want him. Can't do a straw poll.
No, but. Again, but if you guys would vote it down, then I would go back to the drawing board and have to bring somebody forward to you. That's the one and four. Option.
Now, the one brings the recommendations of the superintendent and the rest of them is all, we get a list of all the candidates are brought forward board. So at least. We understand who his recommendation is. We still have everybody that's applied, the understanding of that because. Don't want to protect the friends and family.
Which is what we talked about being in the handbook.
Yeah, and I think you should see everybody who's coming. Correct.
Yeah, and he's never said that, that that.
It's not about him, it's about this.
I understand, I'm talking about.
Anybody taking these seats.
Talking about just the process and how we discussed it. We, we talked about if it's not Dr. Mike Razor in this position, that's, that's how we frame all these things. So they're not. Planted one way or the other. It's looking at it through all aspects.
Well, a- and, and yes, I agree. The handbook needs to get addressed, which is an ongoing process, but. Policy sets everything and then the handbook is to fine tune the policy, but still policy trumps.
Yeah.
So you got to make sure that you're not over trumping yourself in a position where. A rogue superintendent in the future decides, well, policy says it right here. Superintendent makes the decision, that's it, I send you the candidates. Your handbook may say, well, for principal X or administrator Y. You know, you got to have a committee, you got to do this, you got to do that, that if they go back and say policy. Is this, that doesn't mean anything to them. To me, policy is like a local ordinance. It sets the law of the board. So I want to make sure it's clear in the policy and then you can fine tune it. If you do the one and four, which I would amend my emotion to do that. Then it would encompass the superintendent's recommendation with the rest of the board getting the. The rest of the candidates and being able to make a decision from that. So I agree with that. I'm in my motion to do that. Combination of one and four.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, okay, so we have an amendment.
And also, sorry, on my motion, Tyson, sorry, to remove teachers as a selection. I personally don't think that. The principals and the superintendent know more about teachers than any of us all day twice on Sunday. Um, so I wouldn't want to be involved in that process other than voting on like we're supposed to do tax totally, although.
Were those right, were those put in there originally though? Because they are considered professional staff, because this is employment of professional staff. When we were talking about that, is that why we included teachers in there?
Teachers are considered professional staff.
But that, that was why, because they're considered professional staff.
Okay, well, when I talked to the Geneva guy, he said, you don't have that. Teachers are just a local selection. You and I talked about teachers being something separate and.
Many times principal selects. Most times principal selects, so that's.
And then they go to you and then you give us the list and we vote on it.
Okay, I have a motion. And a second. To go. With option one and one and four.
And the rest of the changes are.
Instead of option one. And if anybody wants to add any discussion to that.
And just the discussion of the handbook.
So what, so what do you, so Dr. Mike, explain to me what you mean by option for all applications for employment shall be referred to the, and that says blank.
It'll be board. In my motion.
Yeah, the board will see everyone who's applied.
Which is what we talked about doing in the handbook.
Yeah, so it's basically saying.
It would mirror that.
And, and kind of to, to Mr. Mark's point, the way, the way that I look at it, the way I was told is policy is like the constitution. Procedures of the law, you know, so your Miranda rights are laws. That the constitution then says you have to have them. So basically, any of these positions, you'll see everybody who's applied for them. But then I'll make a recommendation based upon the folks who've applied. And we could discuss the merits of any candidates then in an executive session. So somebody's dirty laundry isn't necessarily aired.
And that way in the future, if you get a board or a different superintendent that's sitting here and you get the list of all seven financial people. And the superintendent recommends their cousin. Then you can pick the one that's somebody local instead of the cousin, I mean.
No.
Or you can make the superintendent answer for why, you know, why, why do we have somebody with their masters in business and an accounting degree? And we're not recommending them and we're recommending, you know, the county dog catcher.
No, and I understand all that and this is why we have discussion, but, but the other part of it, and I've said this to you. Is understanding that no matter who sits in these seats and we're protecting them, but if you get other people that sit in these seats and want to change any given policy at any given time to slant it back another way. In all transparency, then that is still an option as well, because it's just going to depend on who's sitting in these seats at any given time.
Correct, and, and.
It's, yeah.
You, I hundred percent agree and you told me that and. I never reviewed the policies, to be quite honest. I rely on you guys to do the policy stuff and now I've been reading it more and more and more and. The shocker to me is our policy is currently the superintendent only. So the argument that everybody gave during that year that I've been dealing with, she literally had the authority by our own policy. Because you all didn't have any, nobody changed anything to pick whoever she wanted from there, so.
And that was. That was an exception, not the rule, and I understand looking forward, you have to protect everything, but that was the exception, not the rule, because in all years in the past, if it didn't go through, it did not go through. And, and the board can vote to devote it down on any recommendation or ask to have it removed before it ever gets there. So.
Okay. I have a motion in the second to approve option one and four and not just option one.
And the rest of it as submitted.
Does it have to go back?
I would revise the policy and I, I don't know about it going back to first reading. I would just do a third reading and a recommendation for approval.
Okay, so then the next one that will be on for a third reading.
Mike knows more about it. So let's see, I'm trying to go.
Technically Tyson and I already made a motion.
Parliamentary procedure here. So we voted to. Approve.
I'm a.
And then we voted to amend. So the first thing, the first thing you have to do is vote on the amendment, whether you choose to amend it or not. If it, if it passes, then it goes to another reading. If it doesn't pass, then there's a vote. On the original motion. Okay.
I'm going to tie that.
Prove it as is.
No. It's no, it's always been in, at least the way I've done it for fifteen years, the amended motion needs to be addressed prior to the vote. Whether you vote on it or not, because you're amending the original motion. So you can't pass the first motion, which approves.
Yeah.
The thing and then say, I'm going to go back and amend it after the fact.
You're right on that. Vote on the amendment and if the amendment passes or fails, then you vote on the main motion.
Correct, you got to do the amendment first.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand.
Can you specify it exactly?
Okay.
Or how it's going to be? I want to know for sure.
My motion was to approve option one and option four and the rest of it as submitted. And the option four will be board as the blank area.
So the only thing we're adding is option four.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to mirror. So the only thing we're adding is option four and it's gonna mirror with the handbook. Which we had talked about previous to our original motion on there. That, that's the only thing that we're adding.
My discussion was, obviously I've not been part of the review of the handbook, so I haven't seen it, I haven't voted on the handbook, so. I don't know what the handbook's gonna have at this point. I understand that's something that may or may not be in there. So for now, on this thing, I'm voting.
Vote on that as well, so we'll make sure I'm. I don't want to assume, cause you know what happens, but the assumption is that. The board votes on that to make sure those protocols that are discussed with the superintendent, whoever that may be sitting in that seat. That those are the protocols we want to put in place because we don't have a handbook that we can follow, so that's way, that way they mirror each other.
And until we.
Moving forward for everybody.
Until we get a handbook, you'll follow this. Correct.
All those in favor of option one and four for the second reading of policy thirty one twenty. Please raise your right hand. All those opposed?
Got six to one?
Yes.
Thank you. Even know where I'm at.
Item, are you sure I'm on F?
Yes.
Okay, item F. Second reading and recommended approval of policy thirty one twenty dot zero two. Do I have a motion in a second to approve policy thirty one twenty dot zero two?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have a discussion. One thirty one twenty, sorry Tyson.
I just, it just says revised policy recommendation verbiage changes. Go ahead.
So for the, this is for the girls, um, on the, you three in the finance committee, if you, I'm sorry, the policy committee, there are. One option and two options and then there's something else. We have nothing checked. We're voting on nothing. So are we going to, in option one, it says the corporate.
Disable individuals.
Yeah, this is one I printed off of what we put on the website. It says, the corporation may employ contract individual convicted, this is about offenses and stuff. We have the choice to select the items below that board wishes to permit. One option is A offense. Relating to operating motor vehicle with intoxication, I C code, whatever, we can pick also. B battery, unless it's class C batteries, blah, blah, blah. C domestic battery. D contributed to delinquent minor and E offensive involving weapons and F, there's a huge blurb about offenses. So we, as I read this, can include all of these options and then you get to option two. It has three or four choices in there that are not selected, so I don't know what we're voting on, so.
Can I see that real quick?
You're also gonna see that on, just so we can not have to deal with this. That's why I bring up these other ones. We don't have selected choices on forty one twenty.
Corporation may, section thirty nine five, no, okay. There, there was a selection.
Pick these choices here and you have to pick those. For me personally, whatever, Todd says legal.
Yes, well, they're, they're all, we need to look back.
We can pick any of them from what I understand.
Well, I think we need to have another, what, what did we pick on our first reading? Because there were. The discussion that, that was had in the committee, as you recall, is a twenty one year old. Can contribute to the delinquency of a twenty year old who's a minor and then at forty six years old. I don't think that should be held against that person for employment.
Right.
There are other things that. Those were our recommendations, but we made, we selected some of those, so I, I would almost say table this one for.
We're gonna have to table it if we, if you all did select something because the public did not, cause I printed that from the public. That means the public did not see what we're voting.
That one, that one needs tabled.
And then you have two more that are the same. That didn't have, they're, they're not selected.
Are there anything shown on there? Hmm, yeah, cause we.
We went through.
Yeah, these were the ones that we actually did online as we were doing them.
I know we had trouble uploading stuff, so I wonder if something, maybe original copy instead of the modified copy got put up.
Yeah, well, we were in board docs as we did it. So board, board docs was spinning that day, so maybe it didn't.
I think that was.
I make a motion to table this.
Teams thing to work either.
Thirty one twenty, okay.
But now I'm thinking our first reading, cause these are second readings, we'll, we'll have to go back and look at our agenda and. If they were selected for the first, but we gotta make sure they're right. And these are fairly, I don't wanna make judgments for you guys, they're fairly cut and dry ones, so.
I mean, it just talks about offenses and stuff of what, what you would wanna classify. Reason why of employment or, you know, whether they have a battery, domestic battery. I mean, there's a lot of legal mumble, but, you know. We should, we need to pick one and make it, or pick multiple ones.
Yeah.
Not only there, we also have to do those. Those weren't selected.
And you said there's three of them. Can we table all three?
Well, this one.
Well, one's professional staff, others non-certified staff. I mean, they can be simple and just put it all in one.
Yeah, it's, it's all, it's literally the same policy, but it's underneath the different categories.
So for just this one, motion would be to table thirty one twenty point O two. For clarification from the policy committee and the superintendent and to repost the second reading. From what we had on the first reading, verify.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second to table the second reading of recommended approval of policy thirty one twenty dot O two. We've had discussion to why. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Uh, who made the second?
Item G, second reading and recommended approval of policy thirty one twenty dot one one. Do I have a motion and a second to approve that policy?
The next one, right?
This one's fine.
Okay, at least as far as I read.
I make a motion to approve.
I will second. Looks like, uh, really, which one we have here?
Yeah, you're, yeah, thirty one twenty one eleven?
Yeah, revised policy recommended verbiage changes and options on board members. And public electronic participation in public hearings. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Item H, second reading and recommended approval of policy forty one twenty. Do I have a motion, a second to approve policy forty one twenty?
If, if I could clarify with the committee that I think we're missing on this one as well, the. Check marks, you guys, you two can tell me.
So this one has options A, B, and C, and you didn't pick any of the option A, B, or C.
I think it was, well, there's.
That's just a non-fraternization part.
But now down through here.
All the notes for the other stuff.
I think it was option D. Let's just table this one again, so we can get it. Yeah, it was option D that was chosen, but it wasn't, but it wasn't selected in the option D.
Table, uh, what is that one?
The components of option D have things, option D itself isn't.
Just to be clear, I'm transferring. That one's forty one twenty, right Tyson?
Forty one twenty, correct.
I make a motion to table forty one twenty.
I will second. And we all, we've discussed why we're tabling it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Q. I, second reading and recommended approval of policy forty two thirteen. Thirteen, excuse me, dot zero one, technical correction. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy forty two thirteen dot zero one?
Is this forty two thirteen dot zero one?
Yes, forty two, yeah, forty two thirteen dot zero one.
This one I have a question on, but it's not about, the policy is correct. I just got a question, so you can go through the motions, I mean.
I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead. On the discussions, and this is about sexual relationships with, um, student-staff relationship stuff. So it gets into the nitty gritty of the funds and it does have the correct things, but on the back, I wanted to understand why our committee chose to, maybe the superintendent. Remove all the reasons why current, our teachers, to me, I think you'd wanna have as many reasons we removed all those. You know, like talking dirty or putting stuff, I, I think you'd want that in your policy, so teachers and students know not to do those things. I don't know why we would.
We wanted to, the discussion came from, and the guidance was. Someone who is, someone who's predatory, can be very specific and can dance around. It's these things, it's these things, it's these things, it's not these things. It gives the board the judgment. Instead of only having specific things to choose from.
Okay.
So that falls, talking dirty, inappropriate, all falls into that.
Had a very detailed, somebody made a detailed list of what you.
Yeah.
Examples of not.
There was other things that were discussed in that discussion as far as like, let's. Unfortunately, this is an example that has happened in the past couple of years. Um, if a student passes away, you can't. A teacher is not allowed to come up and hug another student if they're like, if that's in that policy, they will get. You can't touch.
Must be removed.
But, like, so it's like if a, if a teacher or a staff member comes up and just, you know.
And I'm all, I'm all, cause you and I talked about this before, cause we've had pictures where teachers are giving hugs to kids for great jobs at coaches or whatever and. It's just part of nature and it's being a, an adult and nurturing towards your athletes or your students, we all do that. But how do we protect? One, the teachers and two, the students and the coaches from.
If you check.
Rogue people that sit there and say, I don't like Johnny as a teacher, or I don't like Johnny as a coach. He did something, let's fire him over it. We don't have anything in the policy that says. Giving a high five or a hug to a coach to a player, there's nothing in the policy, but it becomes a. You know, system where these people sitting here are the superintendent at the time, so because we don't like this person, we fire that one. But then you have this one over here who's doing the same thing that everybody loves. If you have it in policy specifics as much as you can. Then you can't have a good old boy system where you fire the guy you don't like and keep the person you do, even though they did the exact same thing. So that's why I was just, I saw that list was stripped and I'm like, why would we not want some type of list to protect those people? From knowing what they can and can't do.
Well, I think.
Because a predator could be like.
I think the same argument, I think the same argument holds of, well, you fired this person, you have to fire this person now. The other is, it's kind of like the old Supreme Court thing, you know, I don't know what pornography is, but I do when I see it. You know, it's, in this case, you've given yourself the latitude to be able to, I mean. Some of these things are judgment calls and having been a administrator who has dealt with predators sadly before. They will, if you give them the specifics, they will walk the line of, you know.
Oh, I understand that. I'm also looking at the flip side of it.
There, I mean, there, there's, to that point, there are definitely both sides to this coin.
I'm just more worried, I mean, the predators are a big deal, no matter what, in every society, but. I don't want an individual teacher or a staff member or coach or even a student per se, get. Individually picked on or, or prosecuted while somebody else did the exact same thing and not get prosecuted.
Well, and I think there's, so from, from a teaching standpoint, our union would be all over us. For one and not the other. And because there's a past practice.
Well.
Involved there.
I would concur if they were union members, maybe not, they're not union members.
Yeah. But can I see this, Todd?
Yeah, I don't know. I just, I thought some, cause right now your, your philosophy or your thought from you guys was, we're just gonna leave that blank. And make judgmental calls from there.
It'd be at our.
Yeah.
At, well, proper channels discretion, but if, if it does reach us, we beat the judge and jury.
Yeah, cause basically we're.
Can we tighten that up a little bit in the handbook?
Well, yeah, definitely can tighten it up in the handbook. Cause, because what, what it says right now for everybody, it says the board pro, this is. The board prohibits inappropriate boundary invasions by a corporation employee into a student's personal space and personal life. And then it starts giving specifics of what those looks like, you know. I know that. Thank God it's in the state of Kentucky and not a state of Indiana, but state of Kentucky passed a law that they didn't realize what they were passing. And it basically said a school employee cannot have personal contact with a student outside of school. And now every coach has no way of getting in touch with their players.
Alright, yeah.
And the sponsor has no way of, you know, everything has to basically be through school email. Instead of like a group me, you know, or not a group me, a group chat type of thing that people have, but. This definitely gives the board still all that discretion and our handbook can be specific.
Well, I mean, it, it's not just for the board, but for you, just to be able to know, oh my gosh, did you violate? What did you violate? You know, did you break a code between the student, teacher?
Yeah.
Communications, you know, buying candy on Valentine's, is that kind of, I just.
Well, and again, that was, that's again, from the administration, it's the board's, it's completely the board's discretion. There's hugs and then there's hugs.
Right.
There's getting Valentine's candy for your class and buying roses for a kid. You know, there are texts reminding somebody about something, then there's texts reminding somebody about something. And, and yes, we've had situations here where we've had to look into things like that this year.
Well, I think if, like Sam said and Diane's been talking about, if we can adjust the handbook to tighten that language up a little bit better. I think the policy left blank will give us the latitude we need.
And I think a good, a good handbook thing would be in all matters of question, you should seek out your administration's guidance on.
Right, or maybe some committee has to review, you know, put together, you know, whether it's. Principals and the superintendent review all incidences, so you get a group of people that have to make a decision to the board. Instead of just one individual getting stuck with that. Okay. That's nice, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve policy forty two thirteen dot zero one. We've had discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Item J, second reading and recommended approval of policy fifty three thirty. Do I have a motion and a second to approve policy fifty three thirty?
Motion to approve.
I will second. Revised policy recommended verbiage changes and options for storage and administration of medications. Do I have any discussion on policy fifty three thirty?
Sam and Diana and Melissa and Mike, this one had, I don't have it printed ever, but I remember something about medicine that we're required. The verbiage in there was about how we're required to, I think, receive it from the parents and then maintain it. Do we? If we have any left drugs or any of that stuff, how do we return that stuff? Cause I didn't see in the policy that. At the end of the school year, we.
Parents have to come and get it themselves, yeah.
Cause you got, you have narcotics, you have whatever.
Yeah.
You don't want a kid's prescription sitting in, in whatever.
No.
Place we leave and at the end of the year, we need to be not held accountable for maintaining those drugs.
There's, um, there'll be, I think this is something that we also talked about as far as revising the forms. That we already have on file as far as if they're like, I'll use my son as an example. He's a type one diabetic. When he was in school, he had. There was emergency supplies that he had there, um, but I had it filled out, especially with his five oh four and his medical plan. But hey, this is what the school is allowed to administer. This is the protocol that takes place. Mom brings things in, mom takes things home, like that, it's all spelled out and there's forms that we have to fill out.
A form, I didn't, so maybe in the form, it's, cause my question, I guess, ultimately for us. At the end of the school year or a kid leaves, we have a locker full of medicines.
Yeah.
Is there some way we can do some form or something that we'd say after thirty days of trying to contact the parents, we destroy it, so then that. The proof of custody.
Think you have that, I think it's like.
Can we just do a custody that says we're getting rid of this after that?
Yeah, I think there, and there may actually be.
Short period of time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a short, it's a short period of time, you know, you, you destroy, you know, we also.
I just didn't see it. I wanted to make sure we covered on that.
No, that. Turned down into like student handbook procedure as far as what happens and then, then it goes into like the office as far as. The forms that the nurse has on file. That's how that all.
But if we're maintaining the drugs at the end of the year, our policy, five days, ten days, whatever destruction.
Yeah, we're not sending them home with kids on the last day of school, on the bus.
We don't even send the cough drops home.
No, cause they'll be trading off in the.
Yeah.
Alright, so we will make sure somewhere that the destruction is, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve these, second reading of policy fifty three thirty. We've had discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Do I have a motion, a second, or no, we have no public comment for tonight. No one has signed up.
Wait, wait, excuse me, everybody left.
Do I have a motion, a second to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve.
Do adjourn.
Seconded.
Hang out with others too.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. And I wanna thank all the policy committee staff for doing all that stuff. Thank you guys. Meeting adjourned.